Welcome, everyone. Evelyn, can you please do welcome?
Trustee Weekly.
President.
Trustee McAvoy is absent. Trustee Wells.
Here.
Vice President Lawson.
Here.
President Marcus.
Here. Thank you. And again, welcome to the second Redwood City School District meeting of this school year. And with our agenda, I'm just going to read again for those that need Spanish translation. Para los que necesitan traducción y interpretación, perdón, al español, por favor, llame al nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete y presione ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno y el signo de número para la contraseña. If you're speaking to the board, the public is encouraged to speak to the board on issues or of concern whether or not the issues are on the agenda. To address the board, please complete a speaker's card if you're present and if you are online, if you could please submit a Google Doc. If you wish to speak to the board on a subject listed on the agenda, you will be called to the podium at the time the item is being considered by the board. If the item is not on the agenda, you will be called to the podium during oral communication. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person per topic unless otherwise noted. And are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve?
Same.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Do we have any oral communication?
No oral communication.
Thank you. So moving along, item six, bond program consent items.
I'll move to approve.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Will. And so moving on to item eight, school and community report, the Redwood City District Pedagogy of Confidence.
Right.
You've got it.
So I just want to introduce, let me get my slideshow. Ready. Did I do that correctly? Still learning. Oh, for sure. Missed one thing right here. All right. There we go. So I want to introduce Whitney Aiken. She is our Pedagogy of Confidence Coach that's been working with the district. And she'll be talking about what happened last week with our NUA and then where we're moving forward this year in Pedagogy of Confidence at the school sites.
Hello. Hello, distinguished board members.
Um, your, your, my guess. The.
It sounds pretty welcome.
Thank you, Evelyn. You're the best. Hello, distinguished board members. My name is Whitney Aiken and I have been the lead Pedagogy of Confidence Instructional Coach for Redwood City School District for the past three years. It is my honor to speak before you tonight to share what has been happening. This presentation will provide context to the RCSD NUA collaboration detailing our district's journey to sustainability, which we are rebranding as Pedagogy of Confidence. NUA continues to serve school districts throughout the country. Redwood City is at the sustainable level, which is the goal for all school districts working with NUA. Due to the collaboration, we still have access to resources as well as connections with Dr. Yvette Jackson, Dr. Stephanie Baker, Dr. Linda Darling-Hammon, Dr. Eric Cooper, and Robert Price. Five years ago, RCSD participated with the National Urban Alliance Organization. NUA has an unwavering belief in every student's potential for advanced learning and critical thinking. Through this collaboration, we are transforming how educators view underperforming students. The National Urban Alliance views the brain as a muscle needing targeted exercise, good or guided training, and meaningful instruction for competency. Bridging students to high intellectual performance is equity consciousness. This slide details the journey from 2018 to now. There were challenges in the beginning. We started with three schools that were district selected. There was an unsustainable training model and the pandemic and the pandemic forced schools to go remote. During virtual learning, NUA quickly pivoted to a virtual PD over Zoom, which allowed teachers' time and space to observe. Teachers were excited by their students' engagement during these difficult situations and started requesting more and more lessons and strategies. Teachers became advocates for their training. Teachers were excited with the increase in student engagement, participation, work output, prompting them to advocate to their administrators for more training. This year, we are shifting to the sustainable model because Dr. Baker requested a model that would allow RCSD to take ownership for their own personal development and mentoring. Dr. Jackson's High Operational Practices represent categories of support that are fundamental for eliciting high levels of engagement and intellectual processing. They are designed to guide teachers in making effective pedagogical choices. Choices of strategies that optimize learning. As a district, six schools have moved through the three phases of implementation, starting at developing, moving towards deepening, and ending with demonstrating. And are now preparing to take the lead in this work and support school or district-wide. One way to understand the Pedagogy of Confidence better is to relate it to culturally sustaining pedagogy, which you may be familiar with. While culturally sustaining pedagogy focuses on preserving and valuing students' cultural heritage, the Pedagogy of Confidence emphasizes building on students' existing strengths and abilities, showcasing the diverse ways we can empower our learners. The Pedagogy of Confidence approach accelerates students' learning, which is essential for students today. These are the current grade level participants who worked with NUA mentors monthly for the past two years and are implementing their own lessons during, using the seven High Operational Practices or HOPS as part of their model. All participating schools completed several unit development days that demonstrated for teachers how to integrate the HOPS to already developed RCSD units and district curriculum. In addition to the current grade levels listed, we worked with entire faculty meeting faculties at five of the schools during several staff meetings. Now I'd like to amplify the voices of our participants. A fifth-grade teacher emphasized that NUA empowers his students and helps them voice their thoughts and ideas, allowing them to learn from each other. The Henry Ford Principle says NUA is the best staff development I've seen since I started teaching in the nineties, and it's essentially UDL at its best. A third-grade teacher says kids feel empowered and NUA makes it possible for all learners to engage with writing. The Mandarin Emergent Combination Teacher also found implementing strategies gained from NUA supported her students with writing. She said, "It allows students to think creatively in an organized manner. NUA strategies empower students to be independent learners. I love NUA strategies." Mr. Borg, a third-grade teacher, finds students become more comfortable and capable at writing better structured, cohesive, detailed, interesting, and well-sequenced pieces of narrative writing when he uses the tools gained from working with the NUA mentors and the district coach. A second-grade teacher highlighted a vocabulary strategy saying, "Students become surprisingly invested in participating in this joyful, thoughtful, and kinesthetic activity." The former Orion Principal found, "NUA's coaching model with NUA mentor supplemented by RCSD Lead Equity Coach Whitney Aiken was incredibly supportive and provided need-based support that was individualized for teachers." Ms. Costa said, "Each student is valued for their contribution to the learning community. It's creating an environment where students are willing to actively participate, and the result is taking their learning to a higher level." As I said, I would have loved to have invited guest speakers, but due to time constraints, this was a way that I was able to amplify their voices. The 2023-2024 Pedagogy of Confidence focuses on maintaining the following current practices. Continuing with having the RCSD Equity Instructional Coach design and demonstrate daily lessons, co-teach lessons, unit plan with grade-level teams, and lead student voice sessions. Provide additional professional development to RCSD POC Lead Teachers, which could be facilitated by Dr. Baker. Stephanie Rome Baker. Continue use of the POC Implementation Tool to set school-focused goals. And continue with introducing the introduction of the POC SEL for after-school program partners. In the 2023-2024 period, the focus of RCSD's Pedagogy of Confidence Initiative involves enhancing the sustainable model. This includes boosting staff engagement at these existing six sites, expanding to new sites, and appointing more lead POC teachers upon request, and establishing stronger connections with middle school and special ed teachers. So for example, middle school principals at Clifford and Roy Cloud have devised or developed a plan to bring the teachers together to collaborate as they begin their Pedagogy of Confidence professional development this year. Thank you. It's been an honor to stand before you and present.
Thank you very much. And I will go ahead and open it for my colleagues to make any comments or questions.
Thanks, Whitney. It's always good to hear about what's going on with the Pedagogy of Confidence. I actually was rereading the book over the weekend, and it's really inspiring. I'm glad I took that chance. I didn't finish it, so I still can have another weekend of inspiration ahead of me. One of the things in there that they talked about was a real focus, it always focused back on adolescence. And I noticed that we've sort of moved down the grades from that a little bit. I think, Dr. Baker, you were saying that actually it did start in middle school, but then it decided that it should move down a few grades. And now I hear that the middle school is coming back. Is the, is it, is it, it's working, right, for the younger grades? Was that a deliberate decision? Like, how did that come about?
It was definitely deliberate. When you have consistency across the grades, language with strategies, you have students who are more independent. And so we started with fourth and fifth grade, and we realized when third-grade teachers were like, wait, what is this? We want to have it too. We tried it in the second grade, so it worked very well for our district.
That's really neat. And then the other one was, I've been to see, you know, some of the demonstration classes and some of how these practices are working in the classroom. I missed it when I was looking at the deck before, but I saw that you were talking about an SEL program and Pedagogy of Confidence for the after-school program. What are we pushing into the after-school programs and what will that look like?
So last year, I was invited by Michelle Griffith and her team to go and provide some support to the participants with, who are directly related to her. So not all after-school programs, but the ones that we're partnering with. And so I provided two after-school professional developments for two hours each, where I gave strategies on how to support students with big transitions, how to support students with regulation, and different activities to help support them with their homework and maintaining that partnership with teachers.
That'll be neat to see how that works.
And then I also used my training from NUA in modeling those lessons that could be for all students and teachers.
Yeah, I love seeing these strategies in action and how they really can, you know, sort of translate that commitment to equity into, you know, you know, practices that, that we actually can see in implementation. And the beliefs, I'd forgotten what the three beliefs were from the book, so I was glad to read them again. I'm just going to repeat them. That intelligence is modifiable. All students benefit from a focus on high intellectual performance, and learning is influenced by the interaction of culture, language, and cognition. Super neat to see that stuff being put into practice. Thanks.
Thank you.
So my question was actually about the after-school also. So you've already answered that.
Yay, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation and just your leadership in this area, too. I know you're very passionate about it. I've loved talking to you about it in the past.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation. When I did my school tour and talked to folks at the different schools, they were all very enthusiastic about the NUA approaches. So thank you.
Thank you.
So again, thank you. I didn't have any questions, but based on the after-school question, it brought another one just to mind. Just my question is, how did the after-school program staff, I guess that you train, take your strategies and PD? What feedback did you get from them?
I got very positive feedback from the team and that they enjoyed it and they would like more. So.
Awesome. And so I just have comments, again, based on the, the presentation is, I want to just say that I love that teachers stepped up and are sharing their passion, commitment, and engaging students. At the same time, we've heard from some teachers, they're actually learning themselves, and so that's really neat. I want to say thank you for the focus on future goals to enhance the model by, again, increasing staff participation. I look forward to the adding of additional sites because I think that would be great for our district. And of course, middle schoolers need it just as much to be ready for high school and life. And so again, just thank you to those that believe and are committed because we all care. So thank you very much.
And thank you for your continued support in our equity initiative.
Thank you on the team.
So Whitney, moving forward, moving forward, since we've going through a transition at this point in time, for whatever reasons. I know we have the schools that are listed on the slide, and I think, I think Jen's behind you, isn't she? Yeah, there she is. So Jennifer, along with, you know, as I, as I speak to Whitney and ask her a couple of questions, as we move forward with this transition and move it in a direction, because I know you wanted your all-staff to be trained in the strategies of the Pedagogy of Confidence. So with that being said, and with lead teachers in place, my question is, Jen, at your school, do you have one lead teacher at this point in time, or are we using the lead teachers from the, which was called the demonstration site?
Yes, one is coming.
Okay, so she's being trained to be the lead. And Whitney, with the lead teachers that we have now that are paying us, being paid a stipend to go out to other schools to model, to plan, and to work with the individual staff members. Those, were there, I think there were five of them, correct? Are those five continuing?
Correct.
Okay. And then the next question to move this along, are others who have been practicing the strategies, who have implemented strategies, shared with their colleagues, are they moving in that direction of being lead teachers?
I mean, it's based on personalities, right, and people's interest, but we are, when I'm invited to staff meetings, I am supporting teachers with being experts in teaching each other using different strategies as well. So they become leaders at their school site, not necessarily going to other schools.
Okay.
But we're building the confidence of our teachers at their own sites as well.
And to, because we did start at middle school, as you know, back when we started.
Fourth through eighth grade.
No, prior to fourth through.
Okay.
When we were just starting with Yvette Jackson.
Okay, yes. Before the pandemic?
Yeah, we were just concentrating on the middle schools at the K eight levels.
Yeah.
And.
That was where I referred to as challenges in the beginning.
Yeah, 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 exactly, exactly. So I know that we are in the momentum of going and, you know, our second, third, fourth, fifth. But as President Marcus indicated, it'd be great to see how we can start to move in a direction to provide the strategies of Pedagogy of Confidence into those classrooms. I know you start out small and then, you know.
Yeah, we started with the willing, and then also at two of our school sites that are actually going to be combining the middle schools to create, you know, more robust brainstorming support for each other. Those schools last year, or even prior, the students have already been using these techniques, right, and they've already been in NUA classrooms. So the students are empowered right now and asking for it, and the teachers have seen what the students have been doing for the last few years. So they are also highly motivated to continue that.
So like I mentioned in my comment, there seems like there's a lot of enthusiasm. I'm wondering, do we also have some quantitative data about the impact of these rollouts? Because it seems like there's lots of these poll quotes and sort of qualitative measurements, and all, all the qualitative stuff seems extremely positive. Do we have quantitative data?
Well, we were looking at test scores, and when Dr. Montez was looking at the last test scores that we gave, and I'm talking the SBAK scores. I'm not talking about IREDDI or any of the other assessments. She did see growth in some of those classrooms. And I know there was the transition that happened over the summer, and so we didn't get to really dig deeper into that because I wanted to and I will have a conversation with her to see if she can pull that up. Or maybe I could.
Yeah, stay directly related, but I firmly believe it had a lot to do with that. We had a 12% overall third through fifth grade increase and language arts and 15% in math. So it was pretty significant.
And the strategy of Henry Ford's third-grade team was to really focus on writing, and they noticed a huge growth in the students' just ability to write complete essays by the end of the year, as well as it being reflected on the testing.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
And so one last comment as we're talking about this. Have we, as a district, perhaps, thought of having some of the teachers at the other school sites that have not made the decision or to join the strategies to actually go and like tour the, you know, whether it's Clifford or another of the school sites that are actually doing it? Because I think when you see it firsthand, I mean, I was at an awe when I went. So I feel that if they actually see it and not just hear it, they could probably, again, see it on their own and
Right.
perhaps make a decision.
We agree with you, and last year, we actually hosted several of those days for different schools to come and see. Henry Ford has gone to demonstration site, et cetera. Not all schools have the opportunity because of subs, right, releasing subs. But when we can, we definitely bring them, and we've even done virtual tours as well. So. And I agree with you. It's, you just feel a difference when you're in the classrooms where the students are thinking critically and supporting one another and respecting, you know, perspectives.
Definitely. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Have a great night.
Thanks.
Thank you, Whitney.
Okay, moving along to item 10, consent items. If there are no questions, can I please get a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Great. So moving on to item 12, 12-point-one is report from board members and superintendent.
We're at board reports.
We, I went to the Welcome Back Breakfast for the classified and certificated staff. That was last Monday. And that was a lot of fun. It was, there was so much buzz in the auditorium when we came in. You could just feel like this excitement, anticipation, and enthusiasm for the upcoming school year. So great to do it. My first time as a board member, so I'm glad that we're past that, that pandemic part and be able to get to do that. And then I went to, I think we might have all seen this email from Cincadino that there was laptop distribution at Fair Oaks Library, North Fair Oaks Library. So that was neat. It was neat to see familiars who needed us doing that. They had some of their students that like had been with them since like third grade or now in Kenyatta College. They are volunteering as well. And it was a partnership with the Hispanic Foundation of Silicon Valley and AT&amp;T. So that was kind of fun. And they ran that tight shift, by the way. It was 100 laptops and they had four hours to do it in 25-person waves. And they would bring people through and like, and in 20 minutes, they had all 25 people set up with software and working to get their internet all set up. So it wasn't just a handout. It was like, here, we're going to get you set up and running. Kind of the same thing that you were talking about with people coming in to register and instead of just registering for them, handing them the, the software on their device and teaching them how to use it. It was the same sort of thing. So that was kind of, that was a lot of fun.
I, I was at the breakfast as well, and it was, it was pretty exciting. It had the, the just really intense energy and excitement from people being here psyched to kick off the school year. So that was, it was a lot of fun to get to see that and be a part of that.
I also was at the breakfast and it was very nice. And thank you for doing the fundraising for the school in Lahaina, too. Do you know how much you raised?
Rick.
Are we?
I knew you had a figured name.
Yeah, I believe it is $847 between the two groups.
Great. Thank you. And then I had a work, we had a workforce housing meeting. And my sixth grader had his first day of school last week, right? So I hope everybody had a great, smooth first week and first day back. Ours was a wonderful first day at Kennedy's, so.
Yeah, good, good.
Great. So other than my one-on-one with Dr. Baker, I wanted to also let you guys know, do I say me, along with a few fellow board members from throughout San Mateo County, the Latino board members have formed a coalition, and we are bringing for the Latino Month Heritage Speaker Series. So the first speaker will be on September 15th, and Jorge, Dr. Baker already has the information, and Jorge's going to send that information out. So there will be four Fridays where a speaker will come in, motivation as speaker. Inspirational for students, parents, and of course, staff are also welcome. Some events will be held in San Mateo at the Polo Performing Arts Center. We're hoping to try to get one of their school sites here at Sequoia so that we could have, you know, some of our students join. Everyone's welcome throughout San Mateo County and October, so September 15th, September 22nd, October 6th, and October 13th. And so soon you guys will all see the flyers are being generated, and so we look forward to, and you know, having our community engage in those series. And that's it for me.
Good. Everything's been mentioned. We did have a wonderful kickoff to the first day of school. Everybody was at a different school site, cabinet members and other additional people besides cabinet members were also there to help out and see whatever, how we could assist in whatever manner. I know, Anna, you took charge in an office at one of the school sites. Wendy was also at one of the school sites, and she was taking charge of, you know, with some of the new teachers and so forth that have come from other countries and working with them at this point in time. So we're off to a good start. I think we're off to a really good start. Little hesitant. We didn't know about our, our international teachers getting here, but Wendy and her staff did a great job of working that weekend prior when they landed on that Sunday night, had to spend the night in the LA airport because of the delay. Got here on Monday. I was just shocked when I met them in here and that they were, even though they had very little sleep, they were very happy and ready to go. And there goes Wendy and Erin taking them in vans and, you know, to get fingerprinted and then take them off to school sites and take them back to where they apartment that they're going to be staying, then go out and get them gross, help them grocery shop. So it's working well, I think. It's, so it's exciting. It's exciting. Not everybody's here yet, but they'll get here soon. Yeah, that's all we need. So it's, it's a great time. It's a very great time at this point. Yeah, so I think if you were to talk to the administrators and to teachers, and especially to the kids, they seem really happy when you're at the school site. They really do. They really do. So the exception of the heat and some of the air conditioning not working and, and Martin, I did speak with Ms. Wong today, and so the part is in tomorrow. It should be in the service people from the company should be here Friday putting it in, you know. So that should all take place. But at the other school sites, it, we're starting to get a little bit of rumbling about how hot it is in the room. And even though there are fans and everything, it's, it's not enough. It's not enough. It's not enough. So we will have a larger conversation about this as the. So we will have a larger conversation about this as the, as we move down in the next few months and start working with the dollars that we have in regard to Measure S, so.
It's super frustrating to have brand-new units go offline. It's like, come on.
It is, it is. And I know Martin did say there was another one that went offline. I think I told you this morning. One was at McKinley, and the other, I think, was Selby Lane, Adelante Selby. I could be wrong with that. There was one other, and it could have been it, or maybe not. Because I didn't hear from Warren, so maybe it wasn't. But I did hear from M I T, so it must have been, maybe it was only M I T, but still.
Are we doing something wrong? Is like, there's different maintenance that we need for these things? Or just, is it just expected that industrial HVACs go offline all the time like this?
It's, I, we haven't tried to think in the years, not like this. And this is, these are brand-new Dyson's, you know.
Right. So just, it seems really surprising that a bunch of them are failing. So, I don't know. It's just kind of disappointing.
My thought is, you know, maybe they were created during the pandemic. I shouldn't say that. That's bad. That's bad. I'm thinking, I shouldn't say that. Did they forget to put parts in the wrong part? I don't know. I shouldn't say that, but that's what I'm, I'm waiting. He got these during that time. It was just like with, with you and your elevator, you know, for a while of a tap, you know, brand-new elevator, and here we go. You know, so let me see, this is Martin. Is he, oh, it was, he's, he's, he's online. He says it was Adelante, Adelante Selby, the main office. So I was correct. Yeah, yeah. But keep referring, cross everything will be done. And we'll move forward.
Then we'll have some cooler kids.
Yeah, definitely. Well, Wendy was doing a great job, and she was, as we spoke this morning, and I went and met with her, and she already had it planned out where they were going to move, and she had sent a communique home to parents. Yeah.
Okay, and with that, moving on to item fourteen, correspondence. I know that we got an email that I haven't read from Mr. Robel. I don't know if you guys had a chance. I just saw that email, but I got off work and then came straight here, so. If there's nothing else, moving on to item fifteen point one, possible and other business suggested items for future agendas. Okay, hearing that, moving on to sixteen point one, changes to the board meeting calendar. Are there any?
Not at this point in time.
Okay, and with that, seventeen point one, it is seven thirty-three. Who would like to make a motion to adjourn our meeting?
I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
Record-breaking. Awesome. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
This is a record-breaking.
Thank you.